I'd like to call roll.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Protem Deidre Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. May I ask Assistant City Manager Maria Stipe to do the invocation, followed by Mayor Protem Tuha Wynn to do the pledge of allegiance.
Sure, if everybody could please stand and prepare yourselves according to your faith. Dear heavenly father, as we approach Thanksgiving and the holiday season, we thank you for your many blessings and the abundance we often take for granted. We thank you for the service of all of our elected officials and ask you to guide them as they work to lead and shape the future of Garden Grove. Amen. Put your hand over your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, before we go to oral communications, I'd like to pull forward item 4A. And this is a commission committee matter, acceptance of the resignation of Planning Commissioner Dale Softner. Dale, may I ask you to come forward? Oh, for starters, I'd actually like to move it. So with regrets, I would actually like to make a motion to accept the resignation. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Member Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neal?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deidre Wynn?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Just like to take a moment to extend my appreciation to Dale Softner on behalf of the city council. Dale has served as volunteer on three commissions over the past seven years that include Parks Recreation and Arts, Traffic, and Planning Commission. Dale has been a Garden Grove resident since he was a boy, and his service to the community is in his DNA, as his mother worked for the Unified School District and served for many years as president of the Assistance League. Dale has also served on the Orange County Grand Jury, the Orange County Veterans Advisory, and the Orange County Transportation Citizens Advisory Committee. Although Dale will no longer be serving as a planning commissioner, he will still be serving the city volunteering as a trained Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT, official. Thank you genuinely, Dale, for your service and leadership. I've got something to present, and then I'll ask you to say a few words if you'd like.
First of all, I'd like to thank my wife, who has put up with the endless amount of hours that I've put in on all the different commissions over the last, basically, ten years since I retired. She thought I was going to be at home when, once I retired. I think I've been gone more. And so, and I'd like to thank staff. They have been wonderful to me whenever I've had a question or an answer. And thank you to everybody on the dais. I think I know. Stephanie, I've probably known the longest. We were on Parks and Recreation together and watched her daughter grow up. So it's been a fun experience and something I'll always remember. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dale. Alright, that takes us back to oral communications. I do have a couple cards. First is Carolyn Coleman.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Carolyn Coleman. I've been a resident of the Third District for about five years, and I work in the First District. And I am here as a single female, black, of a certain age who experienced homelessness because of a domestic situation. And I'm here speaking from a lived experience. And as, I apologize. And so because of that lived experience, and because it was so terrifying, I said yes when they asked me to advocate for housing as a human right. And so I'm here to do that. But first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the council, because I just read that you partnered with Neighbor and Cities for funding for additional housing, hopefully affordable housing. And then also, I learned that you are working with the Central Cities Navigation Center. And so that is, I mean, just to have collaboration, you have no idea how critical that is. And so, but I'd like to give you a few numbers for Garden Grove. Earlier in the year, CityNet did a point-in-time count. You might be familiar with them. And so what City of Garden Grove, they found 391 people homeless. 278 of those people were literally on the street, and others were in temporary shelters. And so, and part of that, they followed up, and the vulnerability of those people who live it on the streets, 22 of them died. And every time I hear those stories, I mean, I just think about me. And when you get there without an invitation, or when you get there and have that experience just thrown upon you, it is devastating. And to not be able to put yourself in a house, to take care of yourself and your family, is debilitating. And so, I would like to invite you to go online and just look up Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and to get additional information. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the work that you've done.
Anna Parker?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Since October, I'm having an issue with the neighbor, and it's been, it was hard to find him there. It was hard to contact him. And finally, we managed it. And today, I went to court. So we're having a big issue, and if that could be avoided, if you create a law that the neighbors are contacted before building, that would be very helpful. And I thank you very much for the opportunity, because all this time, I have studied it, and I have learned a lot. And it's hard to find the proper language to speak to you. And I would like to apologize if in any time I was disrespectful to you, because it was quite a journey to learn. And I hope that this can help, and this can be prevented. And I thank you very much for the opportunity and for all your work that you have been doing, and you taught me a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicholas Dibbs?
Mayor Jones, members of the council. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm a teacher and educator, longtime resident of Garden Grove. Would like to bring to the council's attention the governor having just signed AB 2273 on September 15th. And there's a press release from the governor's office, which includes a quote from California First Lady Jennifer Seibel Newsom. "This bill requires online platforms to consider the best interests of child users and to protect their mental health and well-being." Being that the city provides SROs to the Garden Grove Unified School District schools, it's important that both the city and the school district work together to improve the mental health and well-being of our students. The gist of this bill is that we're, to quote Governor Newsom, "We're taking aggressive action in California to protect the health and well-being of our kids," said Governor Newsom. "As a father of four, I'm familiar with the real issues our children are experiencing online, and I'm thankful to the assembly members for pushing these protections and putting the well-being of our kids first." And then First Lady Newsom says, "As a parent, I'm terrified of the effects technology addiction and saturation are having on our children and their mental health. While social media and the internet are integral to the way we, as a global community, connect and communicate, our children still deserve real safeguards like AB 2273 to protect their well-being as they grow and develop," said First California First Lady Jennifer Seibel Newsom. "I am so appreciative of the governor, Assemblymember Cunningham, and Assemblymember Wick's leadership and partnership to ensure tech companies are held accountable for the online spaces they design and the way those spaces affect California's children." We had a fifth grader at Hazard Elementary School commit suicide about two years ago or so, because she was being bullied on Instagram. We had two seventh graders in the school district attempt suicide, and other ones attempting suicide. The BWLOC program coordinated by the city and the SROs that handle the calls to the schools are, I believe, well aware of the, or should be aware of the dangers of social media addiction, technology addiction. Our schools, unfortunately, the district has been participating in esports, condoning and allowing esports as part of the school program. That needs to change. So these are things that are important, and I urge the council and the mayor and the staff to work, to come up, and to reduce the number of calls that are going out to the schools dealing with these things. So the online dangers need to be guarded against, and I hope you'll take action in that regard. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. That's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on anything not listed on the agenda? Alrighty, then that will conclude oral communications. We'll go to written communications, item 2A.
Item 2A is consideration of a request from the Sister City Association of Garden Grove for cosponsorship of the 2023 Strawberry Stomp 5K on Saturday, May 27, 2023. And Ms. Janet Palios here to provide the report.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. The Sister City Association of Garden Grove is requesting that the city council consider cosponsorship for the 2023 Strawberry Stomp 5K on Saturday, May 27, 2023. The association is a local nonprofit organization that is in good standing with the IRS and has been serving the Garden Grove community since 1989. Each year, the association sends Garden Grove youth to our sister city, Anyang, South Korea, and also hosts their youth as part of the Student Exchange Program. All proceeds from their fundraising efforts go directly towards sending students overseas and hosting the incoming exchange students. Cosponsorship for the 2023 Strawberry Stomp will have an impact to the city's general fund. The estimated cost to provide police and public work staff required to support this event has been approximately $13,000 in past years. This approximate cost is based on the two additional hours that are added to the existing street closure plans for the Anyang Strawberry Festival Parade. Staff recommends that the city council consider this request. This concludes staff's report. We do have representatives from the association here with us tonight, and they can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was gonna move to approve.
Okay. Call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alright, we will now recess to successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigan?
Here.
Member O'Neal?
Here.
Member Deidre Wynn?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications. Consent items, just receive and follow the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council, and that takes us on to consent calendar. It's, whoops. It's recommended that items 3A through 3N be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item.
Second.
Call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Alright, we already did commission committee matters, so that takes us to items for consideration, item 5A.
Item 5A is the first reading and introduction of an ordinance adopting the 2022 California Building Standard Codes with Modifications entitled "An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove, Amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and Adopting by Reference the Following Primary Codes with Certain Amendments, deletions and additions thereto: California Building Code 2022 Edition; California Residential Code 2022 Edition; California Electrical Code 2022 Edition; California Mechanical Code 2022 Edition; California Plumbing Code 2022 Edition; the California Energy Code 2022 Edition; California Fire Code 2022 Edition; California Existing Building Code 2022 Edition; California Green Building Code Standards, or Standards Code 2022 Edition; California Reference Standards Code 2022 Edition, and certain secondary codes, including the International Property Maintenance Code 2021 Edition, as published by the International Code Council, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa 2021 Edition, as published by the International Code Council. And we do have a presentation by Mr. David Dent.
Alright, good evening, mayor, and honorable council members. Today, I'm gonna go over just a quick briefing of an update from our Building and Codes updates, along with a couple other updates from our Building and Safety Department. As you guys know, we update the codes every three years. This year, it's going into 2022. And what I've done is condensed all what you've heard into a couple Cliff Notes. They pretty much give you guys the headliners of some of the major changes that are happening in this code cycle. From an overarching standpoint, the building industry is moving towards, as we all know, a zero net energy balance in sometime around 2035. And most of the codes are now geared towards pushing the industry and development standards into that particular fashion of life. So again, I've got pretty much about seven highlights here of some of the major changes that are going into the Building Department and throughout the building industry. And the first major one, and this is actually due to COVID, this one got pushed through, is that now the expiration for permits are moved from 180 days to 12 months, which means that once you obtain your permit, you have 12 months to start the project. Before, it was six months. Now you have 12 months, and that's just to activate the first inspection of your particular project. Prior to that, it was six months. So this gives people a longer time, is giving people a time to recover from COVID, regain the finance that they need to complete their projects, and that was the, one of the major ones that we're associating that with. The next major one that's kind of gone through a couple different cycles, but now it's approved for California, and that's the tall, mass, heavy timber construction. So now, and it's been happening over in the eastern countries, but now it's brought over to the states. And again, this allows for the building of an 18-story wood-framed, heavy timber construction. We don't necessarily see that here, particularly in Garden Grove, but based on this and the cost of metal and concrete and some of the other industry materials, this allows for a faster, quote, you know, more streamlined construction. There's several different variations of that, but for the most part, that was a big one that got approved this past cycle. And again, to move towards the energy and power and saving of electric, they're going now to what we call electrical readiness, which means now all new multifamily and single-family residences, when you install an appliance, if it's gas appliance, you have to actually install a receptacle next to that appliance, so in the future, it can be converted to electrical versus gas. So now, all new construction is going to go around that line. So if you have a water heater, a cooktop, electric, you know, or gas cooktop, you have to actually install an electrical outlet close to that particular appliance. And again, the other big thing going into this code cycle is energy storage. There was adversity to that before due to the safety measures of that, but now you can use energy storage as a backup versus just having a generator for a commercial property. Before, it used to be a gas generator that, or that had to be put in a room with different clearances. Now you're allowed to use battery and energy storage as that particular backup source. And that's kind of a variation of the four and five you see there. So again, we're allowed to do it in multifamily, and now you're allowed to do it in commercial applications. And along with that, as we all know, if you've seen on YouTube or any of the other variations, the spontaneous combustion of lithium-type batteries, you know, that come from the hoverboards, the e-scooters, the e-bikes. The fire department fire safety measures are getting more into the world of protecting that and safety measures. We've had a couple fires where in garages, if you leave those things plugged in for an extended period of time, they can erupt and cause issues. So there's clearance standards for that. A lot of solar systems now are being equipped with battery backup, so it's just allowing us to have the proper clearance, you know, the barrier construction and protection for those particular storage mechanisms. And one of the bigger ones that are coming in for the commercial side of that is really pushing the electrical vehicle charging. What they're doing around that particular code is they're creating three variations of what is required for a commercial property. As of right now, the code is what they call EV-ready, or electrical vehicle ready, which was often a term that was confused as to what that actually means. You know, it was putting conduit to those particular locations, so they have to actually be ready for, you know, particular storage. Does a power source have to be upgraded enough to carry those things? There's all these questions about what that meant and what commercial properties had to do to be ready for EV charging. So now they've made three variations of that. And each code cycle, depending on the size of a commercial lot, has a particular requirement for these three variations of what EV charging is. So you have electrical vehicle supply equipment. That means the system is actually installed. You know, it's there, it's working, it's functional, and the code will require mechanisms and certain numbers of parking spaces for that. The next one is electrical vehicle capable spaces, which means that the actual power and infrastructure is prepared and ready for the installation. The conduits are actually ran to each of the different parking spaces, and all you have to do is just install the equipment. You know, so that's that in particular. And then we have electrical vehicle ready space, which still stays from the previous code. And that just means you have to just run conduit to that particular location. And none of the power source or the power infrastructure has to be set up for that particular installation. So again, when you get into the code, the newer codes are gonna be specifying what percentage of parking is gonna be required for each one of those variations. You know, there'll be a certain number that has to be actually installed, a certain number of spaces that actually has to be vehicle capable, and then it has to be another standard or set that's vehicle ready. So in the end, almost, it could equate to almost 20 to 30% of the parking for brand-new commercial development to have basically one or three of these varying components of electrical vehicle charging. So again, there's a plethora of other code updates, but those are just the main ones that kind of get people going. There's no true milestone ones like we had before in the past, where solar is on brand-new construction, or fire sprinklers for every brand-new single-family residence. There's nothing like that this time around, but I just wanted to highlight these that are kind of some of the main ones that have been vetted through the last couple code cycles. So on top of that, I just wanted to piggyback off of just giving you an update of our Building and Safety data and where we're at with our permits issued and submitted projects and total inspections, and kind of take you through how we've actually increased and our workload has kind of elevated over the past few years. And about five years is a good, I would say, a good snapshot of what we've seen and the trends of our Building and Safety Department. And most of them, as you can see on the bottom portion of the display, is the ADUs have been a very influencing development to our particular Building and Safety Department. Back in '27 is when that particular state mandate was put in place. And you can see our numbers in 2017 were all but 100. And then as each year progressed, you know, they've steadily climbed and increased. And if you take a look at the plan check portion of that, there's a huge jump from the 890 or so submitted projects up to 12 away. And the reason is, during that time is when they transitioned from the 800-square-foot ADU to the 1,200-square-foot ADU. So what happened is, we got almost a doubling of the projects, because those that had 800 came back and added 400, and then we had the ones that were initially submitted for the 1,200 square foot. So that's why you see that elevated jump in the 2020 to 21, you know, submitted projects. And along with that, came an increase in the inspections. And along with that, you know, code enforcement cases are still up and going and still very much apparent. But one thing the ADUs have done is they have helped given us a lifeline for those people that are in predicaments, where they've converted their garages, or they've done multi-splitting of their interior of their, you know, residence. This, actually, the ADU laws have actually helped us usher along some of those particular cases that have been longstanding. So again, that's a snapshot of our data and our trending. To back that up, I just, you know, just to give you guys a refresher of where we're at with our staffing, we do have four, I would say, subdivisions of my particular Building and Safety Department. We have our Permit Center, which is the front counter and the interface to the public. We have our Plan Check and Processing. We have our Building Inspection, and then we also have our Code Enforcement Department. And as you can see, we have a current supervisor over the Permit Center. We have two full-time staff. We have a contract staff, and we have an intern that's working with us. And that intern is gonna be critical for what I'll share in a little bit, but our implementation of our new permitting system is gonna be a huge undertaking for our department. It almost needs someone specifically assigned to that department to help internal staff, you know, external staff, and also the public. Plan check, as you can see, the ADUs have increased in the number, so we've kept up with that workload by including some backup consultant support. And then from there, we've increased our Building Inspection. And as you can see, each ADU has its own, I would say, handful of inspections to go along with that particular case. And right now, we have a supervisor. We have three full-time staff. We brought in, you know, three contract staff, and we have one vacancy at the moment. So again, if we're working the numbers, the way it works is we, at this capacity, can execute 100 inspections a day. And with that being said, each inspector can do about 15 to 15 or so inspections per inspector. So if we're, you know, looking at the numbers here, and we have 18,000 or so a year, you know, even at a rate of adding two or three more, would only decrease that amount. So we are effort, we're doing a huge influx of different varying means to bring those numbers down, whether it's working overtime, you know, whether it's having people come in and actually kind of group, you know, or package certain inspections that can be done quick, so we can get 20 re-roofs done in one day. And when you get in that mode, you can actually take care of some that are more higher, I would say, priority. You know, you don't want someone's roof ripped off. So we're trying to prioritize the quick ones, and then stay on top of the ones that are kind of pushed out and really work that to be a more customer-friendly approach to getting those numbers down. And then code enforcement, you know, we have a vacancy for the supervising position, but we currently have a senior. We have four full-time staff, and we have two contract staff, one and one part-time weekend staff. And he's handling- And he's handled all of our vending and all those things that have popped up in the city and works well with our police department. So again, the next steps, you know, we're again approving the 2022 codes today. We're also moving forward with what will be next on the agenda of approval of the amendments for some more contract services so we can continue to better improve our customer service and expediting some of the processes to move the development along. Another, like I mentioned before, the big implementation of our Phase Two of Viva Civic. Currently, right now, we're going on to a year of the plan routing phase of the new system. And so far, we've gotten very, you know, positive feedback from where that current system is at. I will be following up with the more one-on-one, more in-depth of what that's going to look like and how we're going to be doing some outreach with, you know, the public side, how we're going to be integrating that with the internal side. Because again, it's not just now limited to building and safety and planning. We're expanding the new Phase Two to incorporate, you know, some of the fire departments, some public works. And so everybody's can communicate together under the same development process. It's not going to be disjointed where we're not knowing what other departments are doing. This new Phase Two is going to infuse everybody into the same development process and create a transparency that's going to be both available for the public to see exactly where their project is at, at exactly which phase is at and how long it's been in there, and work that system through so people know who's gumming up the work, so to speak. You know, it's a, I think, once that happens, it just brings a lot more, I'd say, credibility and responsibility to all the players in the development permit where somebody can't pass off something off to another person. You're going to clearly see, you know, where it's at and everybody's going to be involved. Some owners are left in the dark. This system is going to really, really give them the breadth of light to where their project is at and what are all the clearances and requirements involved in their project. Because some people go into it and don't know they need Edison approval or OCFA approval or Health Department approval. This system, the moment you submit your application, from day one, you're going to know who and what needs to approve your project to get it to the finish line. So hopefully that'll help move things along. It'll put my staff in positions where they can be more efficient. And again, hopefully save money through getting development processes along faster. And along with that, we're going to create a quarterly report so we can check these things. I mean, why have a new system if you can't check the results of that? So we will be bringing, you know, fourth quarterly reports and seeing what those numbers you saw before and how we're able to turn around time and create some other numbers that'll show us the results of these new things, both from the contract services to the new system being in place and, you know, the code and how it's being received by the public.
I may add, Mayor and members of the council, there's a lot of information that was presented today, especially with the new code and some of the transition of a Viva Civic system, the digitizing and the permit system. So we anticipate rolling out educational, reaching out to our contractors that are very active in the city so that we will communicate some of the updated code changes. If they have any questions, they can, we can filter through that. In addition, we will include just a Viva Civic 101. So building code 101 and how to process and their plans through our department. So all of that will be programmed in February so that we can have ongoing dialogue with our customers that we serve on a daily basis. So this concludes our report and for recommendation this evening is approval of the first reading of the ordinance for the building code. And David and I are here for any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, David and Lisa. Colleagues, questions, comments? Go ahead, George.
Thank you for that great presentation. It was actually pretty educational for me and I'm sure it'll be educational for the folks that watch. I do have a question. Now, this new requirement for, I think you were saying if you put a gas stove top on, you have to have an electrical box. Only on new construction or does that going forward with any, like, let's say I want to go replace my gas stove top, get a new one and I put it in, do I now have to wire it in electrical as well?
Yes, so.
So the electrical that's going to my vent, that doesn't count?
No.
So you have to wire in a different box? Okay.
So every time appliance is touched, you know, a new appliance is installed, that receptacle is going to be required. So it'll cause a lot more people upgrading their service panels and yes, they'll have a domino effect on some of the other components of their home.
Thank you.
Question, as of right now, you know, how soon could someone get in for an inspection? Because I think that's the biggest complaint that we've heard, that it takes weeks, months before someone can schedule an inspection and how do we resolve that?
Well, as of tomorrow, what I'm implementing is what we're finding is because we're so pushed out, people are actually back-ending inspections. You know, I caught one guy who was doing an ADU and he'd actually had two inspections like every week from now until the first week of the year. You know, is he going to use those inspections? We don't know, but our current system right now doesn't allow the public to actually cancel their inspections. They actually have to call us to cancel the inspection. So if they don't remember that they've scheduled those inspections two, three, four weeks out, they're left on the book. And then my inspectors are going out to an average of five or six inspections a day that are actually canceled or they've already been done. Or when that person cancels, if someone just happens to call in and catch that one, they won't remember like, oh, shoot, I got one for tomorrow. I'll just go, I'll take that one tomorrow, but they'll never cancel the other two, you know, that are a week away or two weeks away. So what I'm doing now is I've actually assigned, as of tomorrow, I'm assigning someone to call two days in advance to every, because we don't have, there's no way to do that automatically. You know, the new system, we have an automation to that component, but as of now, we don't. So as of tomorrow, I can implement something that's actually going to make a difference. And what that is, is that two days before every inspection, I'm just going to call every inspection. Like if today is, you know, Tuesday, tomorrow he's calling for what would be if we were open on Friday. But we'll be calling for Monday and if they're canceling, then it opens up enough time for someone to actually schedule that inspection and get inspections at least two days in advance because we'll be able to cancel them. Or if they're not ready, we can put them on a day that they're actually ready to do their inspection. And as long as we keep doing that, I've actually sat an hour before this council meeting to figure that out, that it will actually have an impact. Because if we're able to clear five inspections two days away, it'll actually create the image of you're able to schedule an inspection two days away. Because there'll always be, it's just been religious that somewhere between two and five inspections have canceled a day. So if we're able to clear two to five inspections every other day, it'll allow someone to call in and get an inspection within 48 hours.
And so what is, is there a need for someone to schedule for permit appointments? Like, is that how that works or?
Well, it's the nature of the beast. You know, it's just the fact that because people see that we're so far out, they're like, hey, if I have an inspection every week, at least I know if I get a correction, I got that fallback inspection. But if they felt comfortable, they can call in and get an inspection next day, they wouldn't do that. So we're going to try to re-establish their comfortability with being able to call for an inspection, you know, a day or two in advance and they're going to get that versus the two or three weeks out that they think is the way to do things right now. So we've created kind of our own monster, so we're going to be responsible for undoing that.
Okay, I'm just concerned that like people are booking five, four, three appointments and that's causing other people to not be able to book. Like, is there a way to limit them to do one at a time? Although not ideal, but that, I mean.
We tried that and that got pushed back real quick. So, and again, the new system is going to actually automate that. People will be able to go in because they have a login system. They can cancel their own inspections, not have to call us to cancel them. Because right now, it's the system, the old system is a public-facing system. What that means is that if you really wanted to, you can go, the way it was before, you can go in there and cancel somebody else's inspection to allow for an opening for your own inspection. So we had to, we had to cut that off, you know, because people were doing that. You can cancel five and just quickly schedule your inspection. And we would never really know until the person calls in and says, hey, how come nobody came out to my inspection today? And we're like, you canceled it. No, I didn't. Well, our system says you did, because we don't know who did it on the back end. We just see it was canceled on that day or that time. So again, the new system will send an email reminder, a text reminder two days before. It's going to send a text reminder the day and it'll say, please confirm or cancel your inspection. So that way, it keeps a live document going. And they can go in there, they can cancel their inspections and that way they can feel comfortable doing that. We don't have to jump in there because if no one's answering our phone, you know, at that point in time, they're just say, ah, screw it, let them come out here. They should have been answering the phone to cancel the inspection and then we waste a trip and somebody else. So the combination of the calls and the system will help eliminate that problem.
Very good questions. Follow up on the making appointment. When you make appointment, do we have a mechanism where we sorting out is that avoid duplicate appointment within certain amount of day? Do we have that mechanism yet? Because sometime when you, for example, educate me on this, I never submit, those kind of work order or request. But for my work, when you submit an appointment for something, there's a description, right? A work order. And then if people continue making appointment, like you say, but then there's an overlap and duplicate, it's all a matter of lock you out, you already request for this. Is that something we have, we have that in place or something discussion? Because that could avoiding overly booked appointment.
Well, what we've done, the new system is actually primed for that very function. So what that means is that, and it'll help people actually educate them as well. So for example, if you get a re-roof permit, there's only three, two to three permits or two to three inspections for that particular permit. But what happens right now is if you go on to the website to schedule a re-roof, you got every inspection under the sun. So people just randomly select whatever one is available for them to take. But now with the new system, they get a re-roof permit, there's a sheathing inspection, there's a final inspection and the other just in case they, you know, did something. So that's all the inspections they see. Once they select the roof sheathing one, it doesn't allow them to schedule that twice or to, you know, double book that type of inspection. They can clearly see, oh, I only need three inspections for this. They don't, and it kind of points them in the direction of, and they'll have instructions on, this is when you call that. So we're going to do a lot more interface with the inspections to allow them to know which ones are required for the particular projects and not give them, you know, because we get people with re-roofs scheduling foundation inspections because they just select whatever ones that the phone first generates for them. And then we look at that and we're like, foundation, that's probably not the one they need. We got to call them back and figure out if that's the one they need or not. So this system will help to eliminate those duplicates and it'll point people in the right direction.
David, I have a question. How do you guys handle corrections at this time? So let's say you have a framing inspection and you fail and it's fairly simple and they have it corrected within a day. Do they get priority to get, come back? They don't have to make another appointment, do they?
No, we've, I've given instructions to my inspectors that if it's small enough and easy, a correction just to go right back.
Swing by?
Yep, go back by same day or next day. And if they can't, they call me and I'll go out there and I'll handle that.
Okay, yeah, we didn't want to get backlog on correction.
No, they're not.
Okay. Well, first of all, to be fair to building inspection and plan check, I got a few complaints, but also every now and then I got compliments. In fact, some of the contractor who know me go, Mr. Bowie, I would like to, is there a way for us to compliment this staff or other staff? And I said, well, the best way to do that would be to send an email to the mayor and council member and thanking, thank you that person. But they feel uneasy doing that, so they, I pass the word along. And understanding that people tend to complain maybe six or 10 times the time that they compliment someone. So, you know, we understand the challenge and we understand that you are in public eyes so you're under a lot of scrutiny, so we understand that. My question to you is sometime I got called from people who panic because every time they call for inspection, they said, Mr. Bowie, it said four weeks from now that we will have a schedule. So from their perspective, all they know is if along their project, they have to wait every four weeks, it would be, it would cause them a lot of pain and cost and things like that. And I know you have, you're trying to do very, your very best to come up with a way and more resources. And not only that we authorize you to hire more that you can go and get people on board. So with all of those difficulty, do you have any plan to monitor the progress so that, you know, and not waiting six more months and say, well, we're still having the issue? Is there a way for you to come back and say, monitor every few weeks and see whether we are, you know, moving toward a better, you know, better times or not? I think that would be very, very, the public will appreciate that.
Oh, yes. So we have the quarterly reports again that are going to be coming in every quarter to give you guys that update. We're going to be having the one-on-ones to let you know how the system's going to be put in place. And that's in and of itself has a reporting mechanism that with one click, I can tell you exactly how many days out we are. So that, you know, will be made in part of the presentation that we're going to be giving. That, and if you guys want personal, you know, displays of how that's going to work, we can, we can do that to where everybody, because it's a transparent thing. We do want people to know that that situation is getting resolved. Because the more it gets resolved, the more comfortable they are, the less their scheduling or booking that far out, the less the anxiety of the development is out there. So we will be giving reports, we'll probably do more frequently in the beginning, but as we see things resolve in the future, the quarterly report should be a good enough, you know, milestone to see that, hey, at this quarter report, we're now down to one week. Hey, we're now down to 48 hours. But some of the things that we're going to be putting in place are going to have an effect that people aren't going to see that within weeks' time because we're going to be bringing in support staff, we're going to be calling and working with them day by day. So you'll feel that almost immediately, you know, with these changes that are being put in place.
I think if you can do that, it's, you know, we're just managing the expectation. Or at least if you let the city council know so that when their constituent calls, you know, we understand that, yes, there is an issue and this is, this is what the reality is. We are aware of it, we're working toward that. I think that would be very helpful.
No, definitely.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I actually, I'd like to make the motion, but before, so, you know, to answer Councilwoman Wynn's question, on the way in today, driving in here, I get my phone rings and one of my constituents called and, is it really 30 days? I logged on today and it's 30 days to get an inspection? Yes, it is. And last Friday, or last Thursday, I had another one call me with the same heartburn. So I'm really looking forward to this new system. Tomorrow, you say you're implementing it?
They're calling ahead of time, yes.
So as of today, it's 30 days. But hopefully we'll see some dramatic increase in that real soon.
Because for me, it's, yeah.
With that being said, I'm making a motion to approve.
Thank you. All righty, call to vote, please. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item 5B.
Item 5B is approval of amendment number two to the agreement with CSG Consultants, Inc. and to award a contract to Willdan Engineering to provide on-call building contractual services. And Mr. David Dent is, will provide the report.
I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this is a follow-up to the recent presentation we made it. This is a request to approve two consultant services contract. One is an amendment to CSG and the other is a new contract to Willdan and both of those will provide on-call and contractual services. This concludes our staff report and we're available if you have any questions.
Questions or comments? Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from council members? We have none listed.
Just a quick one. Election time, I just want to thank my district for re-elected me to another four-year term. I do have one suggestion for staff and I briefly talked with the city manager. On the app, if they're, you know, I've used it, some of the common things that we've heard. And we always tell people, hey, use that app, use that app. It's a good way to, you know, get things done. And quite frankly, it's really successful. I mean, the few times I've used it, it actually got quick results, you know. So it obviously goes to the right people and the right things happen. And, you know, I put in, you know, Joe Schmo is my name, they don't know who it is and it still gets done. So I'm quite happy with that app. But one of the shortcomings in it is that there's no reply. People will report something and they never know if it actually got addressed or not. I happen to know because I'd look and I'd drive to wherever the problem was and look and, oh, yeah, they fixed it within a day or two. Actually, I think two days was the worst time I've seen on that app. You know, something get resolved graffiti or whatever it is. But, you know, people who don't go by the same areas a lot or something might not and they, I wonder if that. But, you know, people who don't go by the same areas a lot or something might not, and they, I wonder if that ever, you know. So I don't know if that's something that, you know, is feasible to do where they could get a system-generated email, hey, we, we responded and fixed the problem or something like that. But I think that would maybe improve that app a little bit, so people know that the city actually did something about their complaint and.
Councilman, I use the app myself. I'll be driving around, I'll see a shopping cart sitting out there and I'll just, you know, that's a typical thing. I'll, I'll put that in the app and I'll say, two shopping carts here, and then I kind of forget about it. Now, what I usually get is something that says, we've received your request, and I, I know it's been received. But to your point, I don't get anything that says, we actually picked up the shopping cart and took them away, which is what I think you're talking about.
Yeah, and I think it lets people know that, you know, hey, city took your request and they did something about it. And it, you know, I mean, the city obviously is doing something, so why not let the person know? You know, if it's cheap and easy to do, I don't want to spend a million dollars on a new system or anything. But if it's something that's easy to do, I think maybe that would be nice to incorporate.
Let us, let us do a little follow-up on that and see if there's a relatively manageable way to, you know, get back with somebody without then engaging in a back and forth and a bunch of other communication. But I, I understand your point.
Don't have much. I just wanted to congratulate my daughter, Michelle, and her new husband, Nate. Were married on November 4th, and I was honored and privileged to marry them up in Big Bear. So congrats to them and on their future, so. That was a while back. That was a while.
Go ahead. I'm next. Congratulations, John, for get promoted again to be father-in-law. But other than that, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Over the last few weeks, I got a lot of complaint from people in my district, business people in my district about street vendor. We're not talking about small, you know, street vendor, you know. There are one close, very close to my house, but I can't let it go because it's very small operation. But we're talking about huge. Security vendor and I believe sometimes they go to Westminster, sometimes they go to Santana, Fountain Alley, and Garden Grove. They take over the, completely take over the sidewalk with tables and chairs and cookings. And we're talking about huge, not, not, not just, not just a few, you know, like a few dozen square feet, but like, like, you know, 60 or 80 square feet that they occupy. It blocked completely the sidewalk, so people cannot go on sidewalk, but have to go inside the parking lot a big day too and then turn out. In the beginning, I report to LPD and have, have them coming out, and then they go away, but then they, a week later, they come back. Last night, I bumped into another one on Brookhurst at the 99 Cent Store, which is their, their favorite spot. So I, I think we need to talk to the health agency to take a look at that, because it, it posed two issue for us. Three issue. One would be traffic safety. The second one would be health safety, because there's no one regulating their food. We don't know if one day it may cause pandemics or something. And lastly, it's not fair to the restaurant surrounding the area where they, you know, do buy the, buy the book and complying to law. And then these people are just doing that. If they're doing that big, they should take the effort to apply for business license, you know, rent a permanent place, and do it correctly. So I, I, I hope that, you know, the city management will, will work with LPD and see if we need to get the, you know, health department involved in, in regulating this.
Yeah, councilman, if I could just respond to that, and we do get complaints from time to time about those. I know we do have a permit system, and typically folks that are not cooking or doing things, fruit vendors and other, other folks, it's pretty easy for them to get a permit. They're not big operations like you're talking about. From time to time, we do have big operations that sort of clandestinely get, get set up. There, you know, a lot of cooking, a lot of propane, not just taking away business from restaurants, but potentially dangerous situations. There are occasions where the county health department has come out and actually confiscated all the equipment and hauled it away. So that's a pretty powerful incentive for folks not to, to do that. And we've, that's happened from time to time, and our police department also work with us on it. But I would encourage the public, when they see those operations, to let us know. We also have a weekend code enforcement officer that is, that Ms. Kim and her staff have deployed on the weekends to respond to those as well. So our code staff will work with our police department. So to the public, let us know when those happen. We'll do our best to try and prevent those. You know, we don't want somebody to get hurt in an explosion or a problem or, you know, bad food. You know, it's contamination sort of situation. So, yeah.
Steph? Kim?
I just, for whatever reason, today, Councilmember Bowie and I are on the same wavelength, which is a little scary. But I, I, I think, I wanted to bring it up because I know there's a new law. So I was going to ask if we could get the city attorney to provide us some guidance on what that state law prohibits and allows. So I think, obviously, I'm not talking about palateros, eloteros, like that's very different when you're rolling a little cart and it's already made. But I do have some serious qualms about now. I know before I was on the other side of this. But now that I'm seeing big, massive corporations and chains come into our cities and they're not even from here. You know, when it was Juan and Maria trying to make a buck selling tacos on the corner of the street, I was all for it. But now when it's outside entities coming into our city and then posing potential danger. I saw one at the Chevron on Harbor off of Banner, propane next to a gas station. I mean, doesn't seem safe to me, but what do I know? And then there's one just, you know, right across the street by where the pay list was on Harbor and Garden Grove Boulevard, you know, right across from Sabroso Mexican Girl and the Bedia Taco Place. And, and just the fact that, you know, all of them have to pay rent. They have to go through all the permitting processes, they have to go through all the health inspections, and then these entities don't. I have sympathies for when it's, you know, your neighbor who's kind of setting up shop and trying to come up with money to make up the rent, selling tamales, whatever it is. I understand that. But word on the street, don't ask me how I know this, but it, it turns out that a lot of these are chains that are coming in from LA and setting up shops specifically in Santa Ana and Anaheim. But now we see them popping up in Garden Grove, especially up and down Harbor. And so it's really alarming to see that and want to make sure that it's safe. I think for me, it was just I started to see them up and down Harbor, which we've had some interesting accidents in, in these major intersections.
Yes, exactly. And so, and then the ones on the gas stations are particularly alarming because those should not be there.
So, and I think it's an uncomfortable situation for property or land, you know, the owners where they don't particularly want to kick them out and they're kind of stuck, and now they're taking up parking spaces, and now it's potentially dangerous. So I, I think this is something we're going to have to discuss. I don't know if this is an agenda item or if it's something you can provide to us via email with an update, like here's what the state law is. Here's what your ability with code enforcement and police is, is allowable. But I'll obviously want to be compassionate in the way that we handle this, because I, I can't say for certain that every single one of them is a chain. As I've heard that the county health department will come out and take their grills, $2,000 worth grills, but they don't even care because they can buy one the next day. These folks are making thousands of dollars a night, to the point where they don't care that their, their equipment is being confiscated. So that's concerning, but obviously for the smaller, you know, community person who's trying to raise money for XYZ thing, it's different, right? So I just want to be compassionate and understanding in how we approach this, but definitely becoming a huge concern in the district. And before you make comments on that, because I'm done after this, I just wanted to commend the speaker who came up here earlier to, to give their lived experience about homelessness. This is something that I'm deeply passionate about. And then I'm happy to say that my colleagues, you know, have made it a top priority in this city to find compassionate ways to do our part and homelessness. And, you know, we've done substantial work, working with mental health and substance use providers licensed and trained. And now moving along with the navigation center and, and trying to create more affordable housing. It takes a long time, and I know people get frustrated. I've had residents come at last meeting yelling about the Caltrans issue that I've talked Scott's ear off about already. But a lot of this deals with a lot of different agencies. Bear in mind, we are the fifth largest city, but we operate off a fraction of the budget of the larger cities. And we're smacked right in the middle of two of the larger cities that have exponentially higher issues of this that seeps into our city. And so it's just a big issue and it's not going to be resolved overnight, but know that we care and that we're working as diligently as we possibly can. But thank you so much for sharing your story and for being passionate about it, because it takes someone like yourself to come forward and talk about it for people to see the multitude of faces that come with homelessness. It's not just one size fits all. So thank you for that.
Back to two, Harok.
For, for various, I completely agree with Fat tonight. I've been draw around the city a lot, almost every single night. And I see the basically taco, taco stand is every single corner. And they not just one little space, it's the whole operation. And I know Fat's mentioned about 99 Cent Store, it's in my district, and that's very concerning too. I mean, we always talk about supporting local business, right? We always support local business and, and help small businesses. But this is actually hurting business in our city. So I think we should somehow do, somewhere or the others, regulate it a little bit. It's more of a concern, health hazard, and safety. So I, I support this.
And if it's a local person that is trying to make a meet, like how do we support them to get brick and mortar or a food truck or whatever it is? But if it's an outside chain trying to make a quick buck in Garden Grove and then go back to LA to their, whatever corporation they are, then obviously that's, that's not something I'm supportive of.
Alrighty. City Manager Scott Stiles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I've got three or four different things I just want to mention briefly. But before I do that, I know we didn't really get a chance to follow up on it, but I'm sure the city attorney and I can caucus and talk about this. I think it'll be good information. We can put together, and what's the status of the law? What flexibility do we have? Make sure we get that information to our police department, to our code enforcement officers, and figure, and then we'll bring that back. Maybe we can just bring it back to the council as a informational item for you to get up to speed on it too. So, understand that. Secondly, we talked a little bit about batteries exploding and combusting and all kinds of stuff today. I know we're going to schedule a little presentation by our new fire chief at the next council meeting in December. We're going into the holiday season. People will have things and gifts and other stuff stored in garages and near trees and all kinds of stuff. So Chief Covey's going to come and give us a brief presentation about battery safety and other stuff at the next meeting. So we will be doing that. Councilmembers all received my note today that our illustrious police chief, Tom DeRay, is, will be retiring as of December 31st of this year. So Tom has had a, just an outstanding career, a total professional. His entire career with the city of Garden Grove, he's grew up here and, you know, we all owe a huge debt of gratitude to him for his long years of service with us. We will plan a community spotlight for the chief at our next meeting in December. And I'm sure there'll be several other opportunities for us to show our appreciation to him for all that he's done. So councilmembers can look forward to that. The other thing I want to say is the police department, Lisa Kim and her staff, and my office, we've been doing a lot of work on the police facility. The public safety building, working with some of our consultants. We're starting to look at some massing studies and look at some different options. So we're going to be ready here pretty soon to start having some discussions with councilmembers and start to bring you up to speed on that. I would anticipate right after the first of the year, maybe having some study sessions, some other things, so we can really share information with the public about what all goes into this. It's a very complex matter, just an urban, a tremendous urban design opportunity for us with the whole civic center. So we're starting to get some preliminary information in, and we're going to, we're going to try and get that ready to start having some conversations with you so you can share your thoughts with us. Are we on the right track? Do we need to go a different direction? All of that sort of stuff. So kind of look for that right after the first of the year. A lot is going on right now with us on all of that. And then the last thing I want to say, I mentioned the, the meeting in December. It will be a busy meeting. As tradition, we will, we'll have a reception before the council meeting for our outgoing council members. And where we get to recognize them a little bit, it'll be an opportunity for us to take some photos with the new council that's coming in. And then, of course, we'll be, we'll have that reception, and then, of course, we'll be swearing in the new council members that will be taking office. So we'll be outlining all of that and kind of going over that with all of you as we kind of get ready for that meeting. That'll be our only council meeting for the month of December. And then our second meeting in December is, is canceled. So that's it for me. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. General Counsel, any need for a closed session or anything to report?
Yeah, a few items. Number one, we did have a closed session, but there's no reportable action out of that one. I do want to remind the city council that you still have one more act to do officially at your next meeting. And that is adopt the resolution certifying the election results. So the legislature boarders will provide the city clerk a certificate, and then the city council will accept that and adopt it. And then after that, then that's when the new council will be sworn in. So we still need you at the next meeting. And then lastly, yeah, we used to prohibit street vendors, but in 2019, state told us that we cannot absolutely prohibit, that we can regulate, but we have to allow them. And so we adopted an ordinance back in 2019 to regulate them. One of the requirement, I mean, they, they need to obtain permits, business licenses, health department permits. They also need to provide us information on where they're going to sit up. They also need to keep a clearance of a minimum of four feet for pedestrian traffic, for ADA access. So that we do have regulations, but again, if it's after hours, city hall's already closed, you know, they take advantage of that. And unfortunately, you know, the state law doesn't differentiate between individuals and corporate entities. Because ultimately, it's individuals. I mean, the corporate entities may own the, the equipment, but it's ultimately individuals running them. So we'll see what we can do, but we do have regulations in place to, to address those issues.
Yeah. So thank you for the clarification that we cannot prohibit them, but we can regulate.
Yes.
But this thing, I'm not talking, we are not talking about small street vendor. This is a huge operation. They have a lot of, they have at least two, maybe three cooking stove, right? Using portable, and they have, close to it, they have portable electric generators, right? Next to the gas canasbi. And they, they shrunk a lot of light, you know, light bulb. It's huge. They're completely blocking the, the sidewalk. They setting out chairs. So it's, it's scary. It's, it's huge. You know, I seen street vendor, like we, they have small little cart, which is some burrito and some fruit. And we never concerned about it. The public wasn't concerned by it. When they see the other operation, they become so alarmed that how come? Actually, this is what they told me when they called me. Mr. Bowie, how could Garden Grove allow that? I said, we don't allow that? I said, can you come and take a look at what going on at that intersection on, close to Harbor and Westminster? I mean, Brookhurst and Westminster. When they come, they said, oh, my God. So it, it is what it is. I, I think we need to take a look at that and come up with a plan to prevent it so that something bad doesn't happen in the near future.
Because I, I had this problem years ago when it first went in, implemented in District Two. And without that county health permit and without the Garden Grove permit, our police force can enforce them to disperse and leave the site. And that's what I did over there, and it worked. And they didn't come back. And I just, you know, I had to call the police. As a council member, when my constituents call me, I call them. You have a health permit? Do you have, no, we don't have that. Police come out, hey, you don't have the permit.
They, they are very stubborn. They, I called twice already, and LPD respond very quickly. Within 30 minutes, they're gone. They waited a week, and then they come back.
I guess.
And it's very persistent.
That's the hard part, yeah.
Police, police are trained to know the difference between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law and, you know. So you just give them the discretion, and I think that's.
that's the best way to, to go. Let them decide if this is just your independent vendor or if this is, you know, and let them kind of fill it out. Decide them for blocking the sidewalk or whatever.
Right.
No, it's a good topic. I don't mind.
It's a hot one.
Okay, we've gone around the horn with that. We will stand adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming and enjoy the rest of your night.